So we had people that registered?
Not just one.
Just one.
Yeah.
I know, but we're gonna have.
We'll stick it between D and E. D sub letter A. Are you live that, Aaron?
We are live on, yep, we're live on YouTube. Yep.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education of the School District of North Fond du Lac to order with a roll call vote, please.
Chizin.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
Bobatsky, yes, caller.
Absent.
Sniplocker.
Yes.
All right, in order to reflect, we have four out of five board members and we do have a quorum. A report on public notice, please.
Yes, public notices were mailed to the Fond du Lac reporter, radio station KFIZ 107.1, The Bull, WFDL Radio and the agendas were posted in district office, Marine Credit Union Municipal Building on Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. Just a caveat, on some of the agendas, it had 7:00 PM instead of 5:00 PM, but it had the register time at the correct time. I sent out an alert for anybody who had gotten a not correct one to the whole district about an hour ago. I also prepared and updated on the webpage. So the one thing could be is if somebody said, you know, that it said 7:00 somewhere, we might have to reconvene, but I feel confident with all the other things that we can import with them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we typically do, we will have an opportunity for public comment and we'll take that now. So, public comment is an opportunity for people to address the board on any topic that they would like. It's not an invitation for an open dialogue, it's simply an opportunity for them, for people to address the board with their questions, with their issues. And since we are virtual, we ask people to call in ahead of time and we do have one person who called and asked for some floor time. And that person is Christine Howard and I will allow Christine to unmute her microphone.
I'm not seeing her in the meeting right now. Oh, she comes up later on? Okay.
Unless she is called in on another phone with another name that's appearing in the Zoom list.
Christine, if you're in the chat, can you write a message so we know that you're here?
You talked with her about calling into the Zoom meeting?
Yeah, that she needs to join the Zoom meeting, so give her a public comment.
If you want, we can come back if you see her in there. I haven't watched for it.
Yeah, sure.
All right. We'll circle back if she comes in to make her comment after the next item of business. So there's only one.
FYI, I was trying to get into the Zoom portion of the meeting and it says the host has another meeting in progress. So I don't know if that's, if I'm doing something wrong or if she's getting the same message.
So I need to log on, log in.
Are you logged in as a Zoom account on yours?
Yeah. Okay, we'll give one second, other people will be able to come in. Give me one minute. It's a tiny hour out. Thank you for your patience, everybody. All right, I should be good now? Or does that mean North Fond du Lac Zoom again?
Yeah.
All right. Can I log out and go in a different way?
Yes. Okay.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. You're going to vote to log down to the same Zoom account? Not people should be able to come in. Not anybody on the Zoom should be able to come in. I'm still in FTL. Shouldn't matter, should it?
Again, for those of you that are on the call, please be patient with us for a few minutes while we sort out why some people are not able to join the call.
We think we got it, huh? Doesn't happen in Florida. Yep, there we go. We're good to go now. But we can't fix. Thank you, Maria. Okay, thank you. And then let me share my screen too.
Yeah, you should have permission.
Don't we see that, Lino?
Yes, there's a Howard there.
Yep.
All right, so again, apologize for those of you that were having trouble logging in until just recently. We are at the portion of the meeting for public comment. We did have one person register for public comment. That was Christine Howard. And I see that there is a last name Howard on the participant list. I will go ahead and allow you to be unmuted and you have the floor.
Hi, my name's Christine Howard and I have kids in second grade, fifth grade and sixth grade in North Fond du Lac. And I guess all that I really just have to say is, I just happened to see this email when I came to the last peaceful protest at North Fond du Lac. And just that I've been working in healthcare since, for seven years, so since this whole pandemic started. I've been working in healthcare with independent assisted skilled nursing residents at Evergreen Retirement Community in Oshkosh. And yes, like COVID has been extremely scary for everybody, but I feel like the school district just needs to come up with a plan and push through to get these kids back into school. They deserve the right to a fair education. And the longer that it just is pushed off and pushed back, it's the harder it's gonna be for them to get to school. They, we just need to do it because once the kids are in, it's not gonna be scary anymore. At first, it might be, and I can speak from my own personal experiences, when we had to start wearing masks at work, I came to work having a panic attack, just that first initial scare. It's such a hard and scary thing to deal with, especially I can imagine for these younger kids, even older kids. But I just feel like the kids, they need to get in there, they need to learn how to live with this and move forward. And then sooner than later, this is just gonna become a normal for everybody. Our kids, they just need to push forward and we have to learn as a community how to deal with this, so our kids can get the best education that they deserve.
Okay, Christine, I appreciate you taking the time and effort to call in and make your comments. And so, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right, next on the agenda, there is only one item of business on the agenda tonight. And it, under item E, new business, number one, discuss and consider adjustments to the return to the nest plan.
Mr. Sado.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so this is the third time that we've come together and discussed this. And what I wanna do is I wanna thank everybody for the patience and the community, the Board of Education, our staff, our parents, our children. And as we've evolved, we've learned a lot of things about metrics, we've learned a lot of things about schools and restarting. And when I went, the first time, we talked about tying it all to one metric, which we knew as we went on and learned more that wasn't the right thing. So we came back on the 31st and tied it to, tied the opening up of schools and how we would move through the fluid. Now, understanding that we have about 20% to 25% of our students that are already in virtual, so they've chosen that, I wanna give a big shout out to the administration, the support staff and the educators who are really building that program that I think is gonna be great even beyond this year. So thank you very much for that. But yeah, for the other 80% of our kids, we have the fluid model. And we started in virtual based on going into phase one in the rise and Fond du Lac County having quite a large percentage of positive tests and tests and this thing called the burden rate, which we went to last week on the 31st and said that that would be like the gateway. Well, since then, I've learned a lot of things. We've had other schools within the county and across the state open up. We've seen them deal with cases of COVID, we've seen how their plans have gone into place. And we've been able to continue to learn from them and also own what we have here. And I come back today, just to clarify, I know the board had said on the 31st to utilize other metrics, but when I published that document, I had that gateway metric of the burden rate of 250, which would be 258, because we have a larger population. So I'm not gonna go into the specific metrics, but what I, but as you can see up on the, on the, on the page, is that the change, there's only really one change, and that is this first part right here. And that first part states that, so the first metric would be community infection rates and metrics and data used to move through the stages. One would use a dash, county dashboard, including hospitalizations, active cases and burden rate. There still is. And the one thing about that, that metric that you see online at the county health is very good, but what also is that they always go back and cases come up that they didn't know, we just saw it a couple days ago, it was at 10, now it's at 40. So we know that how the tests come in, how that works, that's gonna be something that's gonna fluctuate. And making a decision just based on that might not be accurate based on the information going in. We also know that people are changing the way of, if they're testing, if they're asymptomatic or not. We're still working through a whole bunch of things in the coming and across the state and across the country, actually. So that's one that we'll look at. And then another one is the county safe restart phasing plan. That's another one that I think is important, but as we've learned, that's not directed towards schools, it's more directed towards businesses and other places that might not have as many mitigation and strategies in order to get open and do things in the way that our schools can. Successive learning is from other districts. So, you know, in Fond du Lac, talking with Fond du Lac, St. Mary Springs, Rosedale-Ran, and they doubled cases of staff and students and how their contact tracing, what they're doing. And we're seeing that it might be difficult and I know that there's some struggles in different areas, and you've read about those, heard about those, but they're making it work and we've learned a lot from them. And I really believe that, based on what we've seen from them, that our school district can also open up for our students. And then also our district's physical and organizational preparedness. When we look at coming back, we look at the blended model. So when we look at that, we have all the different protocols that are in place from six feet of physical separation, our masking policy, our plexiglass, our organization within our buildings, our cohorting, our washing and hygiene. We're, I think we have a lot of things really set up really well. And the ability for our district to maintain safety and mitigate the illness spread once schools are open, working with Bridgette Amadon, Nurse Amadon and her team, and then also, you know, with the leadership team, administrators, the teachers, support staff, I really believe that we can handle this, that we can really make this work. And then the health and safety of our staff to supervise and educate our kids. Really, when we look at the county and what the rates are at the county and where there's infections, I mean, right now, I think there, as I look, Steve and I, we're going back and forth, I think there's 292 as of right now of new cases, which would be like a burden rate of 280. But we also look at in different areas. So Fond du Lac, 125 new cases over two weeks, North Fond du Lac at 15. So we've seen some go down, some go up, but overall, we're seeing consistent. We know that Labor Day will probably have an impact on some. And why I bring up Labor Day and I bring that burden rate up is that the key thing is the health and safety of our staff. Regardless of what goes on around us, if the county health department says, you know, that things are okay and our health providers can handle things, it's about what our staff is doing. How's our staff doing outside of school? Are we doing those things to stay safe so that we can be in school and not be quarantined or have infections and not be in school? So I think that last bullet point is something that we will continue to reflect on. I don't have a certain percentage of kids or parents that are infected or not infected, but once we open up, what we can really do is ideas, not to close again. It's to, if we have like a second grader that comes to school in a cohort and they test positive or they were asymptomatic, somehow we find out that maybe that cohort shuts down for two weeks as they quarantine and isolate, but yet the rest of the school goes on. So I think looking at this over the past few months and really starting to understand and seeing what other schools are doing, what I, what I suggest is that you allow me by taking, looking at this data, the health, the county health department, the leadership team, Nurse Bridgette, also looking at our staff and take all those things together and make our decision based on all those different metrics. And that's what, that's what, that's first part is, is saying that there isn't a specific amount, there isn't a specific number, but what it is, is what can we handle, what are we seeing going on, what are we seeing, for example, with other places? How are we doing with our staff? And that's what I would like to utilize to make our decision. Now, understanding that, the decision to move back to virtual learning once blended will be based primarily in the health and ability of our staff to educate for our students in our building or mandate from a government agency. Moving in that all person will take into consideration all the above data and the ability of our staff and facilities to open up for all in-person learning. Decisions moved in-person learning may also be made different at different education levels, depending on what we can do with social distancing and where things are at. So that would, and then if we make any changes, if there's a virtual one that would happen, because we have to, that would happen when it does, but if we make any changes, we give people at least a week in order to get ready for it. So that, that's the change. If you look at the backside, the other ones, the distributed preparedness are already ready. As of right now, yes, we have answers to all those, the building, the number six, Nurse Bridgette, the health team and I, we met and we're working on these things. I feel very good about that. Signs are up, we have more staff and teammates in our schools right now, so we're looking, you can see that all that's still there. And then number three reflects back at what I had said before. Once we get into it, it's about our community. And really, that's gonna be the key thing, to stay open. It's our kids and our families doing the right thing. You know, and I'm gonna have a parent and family pledge next week that'll go out that says, hey, we will screen our children before they go to school. If they can't come to school and they're sick and have symptoms, we'll keep them home. If they have to quarantine, we will quarantine them at home. And we will do that in order to make sure that our schools can stay open. There'll be some tough decisions. We will get cases of COVID in our school, I'm sure of that. But what we can do is that we can be more, more pinpointed and wherever those issues are, we can deal with those. And yet, that won't take and allow the rest of our school to have to shut down. So I feel very confident that I think the time is right now, I think it's important to acknowledge that COVID is something that needs to be taken serious, but with our, with our face mask policy, with, and with our social distancing, our face mask policy is not predicated on the governor's face mask policy. That's something that we had passed separately, just FYI for everybody. But also, when we look at our physical distancing, we look at our cohorting, and I think the community member, Ms. Howard who spoke, I said very, said it very well. I think a lot of staff, when they come back, they said, we like it. Okay, all right. And then they can, you know, once we get these kids in here, okay, you know, we can do it. So my recommendation is that what we do is that the board approves this. This should then allow the decisions to be, you know, ultimately, it would be my decision, but I would not make it based on just what Aaron Sado says. It'd be based on a lot of input and information, working with professionals across our district, staff in our district and also the community. And I think one thing we have is that there's, well, I'd say two things going for us right now. Number one is we're learning from other districts and I think we're gonna be more prepared than, than we could have been even before. And we're learning a lot. I'm very proud of all of our other districts and the people that were working together and helping each other. And I'm also very proud of the virtual learning going on right now. I know it's difficult. I know with parents and how much kids are being engaged during a school day, and I know it's not all five days all the time, and I know it's difficult, but I have been very impressed with what I've seen from our staff and the efforts they've made to really increase the quality of what that virtual looks like across all different levels. I know it's not perfect, but I'm so proud of them for what they've done. So I feel that we have been back in school for two weeks, but I also know that it's time that for those students and those families that pick to be in that blended model, to have them have the responsibility of, hey, let's stay strong, let's do the right things out. If something happens, let's follow through with that, but let's get our schools open for our kids to come in in a blended way. And if the, if the Board of Education allows this pass, this plan to be passed, what I, what I would do is I'd make a statement that we will open up our schools on Monday, September 21st, in the blended model for our kids to come back. So the orange cohort would come Monday, Tuesday, and the black would come on Thursday, Friday. Next week would still be virtual, but everybody would be ready and plan to get going. And I also have good news for everybody in the community in here. The Friday lunch program and breakfast program is now extended through December 31st. So there is going to be no cost lunch and breakfast for any child that comes to school. And we're also gonna be working on how we can get that food for when they're on virtual, that we'll get it through those kids today. So what we'll end up doing is kids who want that food, we'll get that to them on Tuesday night for their Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then on Friday night for their Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So there's a lot of moving parts, but I feel very comfortable and I think, I know our district is ready and we can do this.
Okay. Answer questions?
Well, I guess just one comment, and you, you mentioned this, Aaron, I'd just like to stress that as we move to that model, parents need to be aware and ready to move quickly if their child happens to be in a situation where they're gonna be out on the corner. They're not coming back for sure every Monday, Tuesday or every Thursday, Friday, because things will pop up. Hopefully not, and hopefully not much, but I wanna make sure that we stress that to them.
Yep, and that'll be a big part of next week with communication and working with Bridgette and I'll also get it to the leadership team about, you know, that parent and student promise. You know, that we promise to screen ourselves every day, not to come to school if we're sick. We promise to wear our masks. We promise to do social or physical distancing when we can. And if we are told to stay in quarantine, we'll be honest about that. We won't, you know, send a child back or somebody who shouldn't be here, because really, this is all for us to open up. And my goal is, all of our goal is, is not to open up and close again, it's to open up, stay open, and then learn more and more, and then hopefully in time be able to get to all students in school. And we all need to do that together and be responsible as a community. And I know, and I think, I don't think, but I know our community, I know our staff is right.
Okay, anything else, Steve?
And then, as far as a full return, that's, that's out there. There's, we're not planning anything on that yet. That depends a lot on what happens.
That depends a lot. We're gonna see there's other places that have full time in different areas. You know, there's some that have elementary full time and the middle and the high school are blended more. We might see, you know, in a month or so, or we, who knows? I don't wanna throw a date out there, but the thing coming back is it's not an all or nothing. It's not a just this or that. What we'll be able to do is do things that are pragmatic, make sense, that are equitable, but also can do the best to have our kids have the best education. Let me say this way.
All right, that's all that I have.
Well, I just will make the comment that, I mean, I know this is, you know, a global debate about what metrics to use and what to look at. And I, you know, I understand that everybody would be more comfortable, right, knowing the exact metric. But I, I do think, you know, that looking at all these factors is important. And I trust that you're gonna do that collaboration and partnership and have good communication. And again, we may not all necessarily agree, but I think if we remember our mutual purpose and that we're all here to keep kids safe and have that high quality education, then I think we will be good with this plan.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vicki, comments, questions?
No, I really, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I think this is our best decision process statement that we have so far. So I, you know, I understand, as Paula said, that some people want that magic number, but I just feel that that's, we can't base it on where we are in this instance. And I, I think this is a phenomenal plan as far as collaboration with everybody and doing the best that we're going to do going forward.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think you stated it best to Mr. Sado earlier in that when you make a decision whether or not to call off school in the winter, when we have a snow day, it's not just one factor. It's not just wind chill. It's not just how much snow we got. It is a multiple factors that you have to take into consideration. And to write some kind of a metric or some kind of a rubric chart that would, that would define that would be very difficult. This is exponentially more difficult. And so I like the attributes that are listed here, and I'll echo my other board members' comments that it would be nice to have a metric. But if you have one metric and a number, we will be bouncing in and out of virtual learning all fall. And so I, I like this approach and, and taking all these things into consideration to, to, to click the go switch and to hopefully stay, you know, back once we're here. I'm encouraged by the experiences that the surrounding districts that are back have had. And yes, they've had positive cases, but they've done contact tracing and they've isolated the people who were at risk and they've continued on and they've been very successful at it. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that, you know, the 14 days comes and goes after the last holiday weekend and things will start to settle down. You know, some of the numbers that I'm seeing are on a downward trend, which I think is encouraging. I also think the weather's gonna help us out a little bit. People aren't gonna be gathering as much outside with the cool weather. So I, I support this, this update to the plan as well.
Aaron, I'd also like to add too, and I, you've done a very good job with that as far as the communication with the board, but as we go forward, please continue to keep us fully informed on the stuff that pops up and how things are going, so that if we start to maybe have a difference of opinion, we can talk and discuss again or meet again as necessary. I don't expect that to happen. I think, you know, the way this is unfolding, we'll be able to do that properly and the decision will be fine.
Yeah, I think third time's a charm. And I appreciate the communities, my administration, the teacher support staff, you guys, your patience as we have navigated this and learned, and I really, you know, I think when it all comes, when push comes to shove, our number one goal here is to keep people safe and help them grow and achieve. And I think we can do that. Actually, I know we can do that. And if we're driven, everything is a risk. We know we can't be 100% safe. And when these kids come back, school's not gonna be like it was before, right now. But that's okay. We have to just get opportunities, move forward, see what we can do in the safest way, and then keep our eyes open just in case something happens. We're not gonna put our heads in the sand and think things are perfect. But I really believe that we can make this work. And I think having these different things to look at, it's gonna still come down to a decision made by, you know, and I know that inherently I'm gonna make those decisions, but I will not make them on my own. I'll take input and look at things in order to make us find success. And right now, people of just, on both sides, are just nervous, you know, they're just nervous. But I think I've seen staff come back and, you know, people are like, okay, let's see what we can do. And this mask now, and we've got, man, we got it all set up. Dave and his crew have done a great job. So I feel very confident in pending the board's approval of this plan, I will announce that we will open up school in a blended way on September 21st. Orange cohort, come on, let's rock and roll. And next week, I would send out communications, so will the principals and also the teachers to say, guys, it's on us now. It's on this community and it's on our staff to do the right thing so we can stay healthy. And if we're not, because of something out of our control or something happens, we have to be honest about it so that we can allow other people to have this experience, not at the expense of us. And we're still gonna have those opportunities for those kids to virtually learn. And we're gonna still have those opportunities for them to help and be successful. And you are, Elka, he's gonna soar and get better and better. So I think it's time, I appreciate everybody's patience, I really do. I know this has been a strenuous time for everybody, but I think, I know it's time for us to open up the nest again and get our kids back. And I think the environment, although there's things going on, I think because of what we're doing, we can do it in a safe way and feel that we can do this well.
Aaron, can I just make, or can I just clarify something? So the decision to move back to virtual learning once in the blended mode will be based primarily on the, on health and ability for staff to safely educate and support. So that, you know, is rings a bell of like what happened in Oshkosh, right?
Right.
So, but I, I just wanna... So, but I, I just wanna, I see that it will primarily be based on staff, but I just wanna clarify, I interpret that as, that doesn't mean it's only staff health decision. I mean, if we would be at a level of, let's just say, 50% of our kids or something crazy, then, then that would also be a decision, but primarily, you are looking at staff, but it's not the only way we would go back to virtual.
Absolutely, I think, I think we've looked at that, we've had some really bad flu seasons and got close to talking with, you know, the county and Nurse Bridgette, should we, how many people are absent? What do we need to, we have to have a date, there's been times like that in our community. You've probably heard of different districts who had to shut down the clean because of, because of the flu. Now, I have a prediction that I think is a little bit, I'll just throw it out there. Influenza's gonna come, but with all these mitigation strategies that we're doing and people separating, I, I know it's gonna be difficult, but I really think that we're gonna do some really positive things, even with influenza this time, because of our new focus on hygiene and, and not being infectious, so. But yeah, that's a very good point, Paul, that it isn't based just on that, but from what we're seeing in different, different schools and things, the illness rate for COVID, well, I think we might have for students, students' illness, it might not be COVID that we shut down, it might be influenza, if that, you know, impacts kids, but that's a very good point, and that's, definitely, it's in that, in that ballpark, just like it would be even if we weren't in COVID times.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions from board members? Seeing none then, what's the board's pleasure on the agenda item before us, on the revised return to Nest plan?
I'll make the motion to pass the decisions process to maneuver through stages in the fluid model as presented September 10th, 2020.
Okay, I have a motion, I'll second that. Any last chance for questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Yes.
Chisum.
Yes.
Koldowski, yes. Step Backer.
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Folks, that is the only item of agenda business tonight under new business, and therefore I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded, roll call vote on the adjournment, please.
Aye.
Yes.
Step Backer.
Yes.
Chisum.
Yes.
Koldowski, yes.
All right, thank you, and thank you for all of those folks out there called in for the meeting, either on staff Google or on Zoom. Thank you for participating, and.
Here, can you check the chat, somebody had a question about school next week, the very first comment.
Yes, so school next week will be blended, or not blended, excuse me, will be virtual, like it has been, but the, but these past two weeks, it's been virtual Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday through Friday. Next week, it'll be virtual, and there'll be, there'll be classes virtually on Monday, and Tuesday, and Thursday, and Friday. So your children will still probably have some things that they'll be able to do on Wednesday, but then virtual instruction will be taking place on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the blended will start. So we'll be in virtual next week, I know in Friendship, they're evolving right now, next week, a lot of their focus is gonna be on assessments and finding out where kids are, which will be great for them when they come back. I know in the middle of the high school, they're still evolving and figuring out how they're doing things, but next week will be virtual, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, like I said, this group still should have some things that, they probably have assignments or some work, but then there's more instruction on Thursday, Friday, and then the 21st will be.
Okay.
So, Eric, I don't wanna beat that to death, but all four days, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday.
Correct.
Yes.
Good.
All right, once again, thank you for calling in, folks, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I am going to end the stream on YouTube.
You wanna, I don't, was there just a couple of chat comments?